Good evening, everyone. It is 6:45 and I'll call the February 14th Cedar Springs Public School Board Meeting to order. Thank you for being with us. And the first thing on our agenda would be if we could all rise together for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the proceeding of justice for all.
Thank you. And if you can have a roll call, please Secretary Slager.
Yes, Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Revard.
Here.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager here. Vice President Schaffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Thank you. And we have established a forum for this evening. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes, the agenda is adopted as presented. That brings us to gratitude. I will open it up to the board for gratitude.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Yes. Thank everyone for spending Valentine's Day together here.
I again am grateful for the theater program. It has been just fantastic thing for all my kids. All of my kids have joined it now and for them individually, it's lifted them up for them as a family. It's brought them together. It's brought so much joy and pride into our family and health school. I'm very thankful for the theater.
We all are too. Thank you.
So not only is it Valentine's Day, but it's also been Mother's Birthday. And she used to work for the school. So there's a lot of new faces that might not have known that, but she worked here for several years. They just appreciated her and her work that she's done.
She's a very nice lady. She comes to my library sometimes.
Happy birthday to her.
I am grateful for our maintenance team and our facilities team and our technology team for providing us with an opportunity to have a meeting in this space once again. They work tirelessly over the last week or so, two weeks under Vic's Vic's leadership. And it's it's just a nice feeling space. So it's great to be back. And we're celebrating their efforts. They worked so hard on the board table that I thought it was only fitting that they have lunch at the board table. So on Friday, you're all welcome to join us at 11:45. We're just going to eat and have some fellowship and just enjoy each other's company. So we'd love to have you join us if you're if you're open and interested. So the tech team, the facilities team, the maintenance team, and then various other support teams that are on campus on Friday, you can join us. So you're welcome to the table, but you might have to sit out there because we've got special guests in the reserved seats.
I don't know if I spot.
Maybe you could sit on Tyler's line.
I'll be at Universal Studios in Florida with the band.
I mean, it's only going to be 86, so.
Ditto that. Thank you to the whole team. It's great to be back in our home room. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to our high school representatives. They are here. Emma, Mia, or Jay? Okay, we'll move on then. Next, we have our MHS FCA Assistant Coach of the Year Award presentation, and that will be presented by Mr. Gus Popovich.
Thank President Reed for the floor. I think everybody here knows I'm head football coach, but also over the last 22 years, I've served as a director on the Board of Directors for the Michigan High School Football Coaches Association. And I resigned my position as a regional director back in January for some different reasons, some time constraints. So this will be my last official act as a representative. And my position is I am the Region One Division Three Regional Director, and my last official act is going to be to present an Assistant Coach of the Year Award. And these are these are presented one per region per year, typically to coaches who have long-term service as assistant coaches and programs, people that have made tremendous impact in their communities, tremendous impact in the lives of young people. And I would like to stand up here and say it's with great pride and pleasure that I present this award, Kevin, but he's not here in our booth. But his widow English is here. And before I present this award, I think I've said this a lot, but I think I use this every every opportunity I got to remind people that Kevin's legacy goes, you know, much further beyond an award, a plaque, a trophy, a championship, a game won, that his legacy, his impact will live on in the people that he touched and and his children in this community and young men that he molded in the 20-plus years of service that he put into this this district. So Kevin's not with us here tonight, but he'll he'll walk with us every day for the rest of our lives. And it is with great pride and a heavy heart that I present this very hard earned award for Assistant Coach of the Year. Awarded to Kevin, and I will award it to him.
Thank you for letting us share in that. We'll move on. We have our consent items, and I would entertain a motion.
Support.
Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes, the consent items are approved as presented. That brings us to the discussion portion of our meeting. And first up tonight, we have a financial update with Mr. Chris LaHaye. And if anyone would like to stay here, you're more than welcome to, but don't feel bad if you want to screw it out, if you don't want to do your work business things.
But Chris LaHaye's board here at State is ripping it. Do you have any interest in budget numbers? He makes the dance.
Thank you.
Um, I'll just start it. I'll be brief tonight. There's not a whole lot going on in February. Year-to-date general fund budget report, we're coming in right where we were expected to be for this time of year, like 50% the way through. So obviously stayed in legs behind if you look at that report, but that's to be expected. The bond fund budget update is number two. I'll speak a little bit more about that when you get to the Red Hawk bids, because now we've really got a good look at all of Series One holistically, so we can kind of reflect on where we stand. So we'll talk more about that. And then really, that just leaves the the first major part of the budget for 2223 school year, which was just announced last week as part of Governor Whitmer's executive budget. We knew it was going to be robust because, as I spoke about last month, there's quite a bit of money in school aid fund and general fund, general purpose fund for the state. So I put a lot of detail in here, not a lot, but just some bullet points about what was wrapped into the governor's budget. You see that she proposed a $435 per people increase for next year, some more at-risk funding for districts to fully fund that. There's a lot of other things littered throughout. Some of the things I really like to see, no increase in in retirement costs for districts because those costs are extremely high. And so really, this is a great first step to to kind of show us that we're continuing to move in the right direction for next year's budget. Keep in mind, last year, I think the executive budget came out and it proposed a $200, $250 per people increase, and we settled at $580. So a lot can change between this and what we will eventually see hopefully by by June. But all real good things here for for looking into the future of our 2023. So if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. But that's that's the extent of my little financial update for this meeting. And I'm just going to stay put. That's okay.
It is. You're up to bat.
Okay, am I next?
Yes.
What's next?
So I just realized Matt's not here. He was sick today. And so, and I didn't catch that early enough, but I don't, we don't have an athletic eligibility update to give him to us.
All right. Then well, that'll be coming forward in the next, the next meeting. Okay.
We'll put that on for February 28th. Sorry about that.
That's right. So would be the next, Chris, is the 202122 Food Service Fund Budget Update.
Okay, so as promised last board meeting, Food Service Fund time. And we need to make some purchases. So this is way too small. See on the screen. Hopefully you can look at it in the board book. I'll give you the rundown. After looking through the budget over the first several months, obviously, everybody's pretty much aware that lunch is free and breakfast is free. So we're serving more meals than we ever have been. And the reimbursement rate from USDA, the state of Michigan, is higher than it ever has been as well. So we're running into the same issue we've had for a few years where our food service budget is is running in excess of one balance, basically. So after looking over this for for several months at a time, I'm pretty confident now as we as we are in February that if we don't act, we'll try to zoom up on four of these. I guess I've got to control this from the back. There's a lot of numbers up here. And to the bottom, bottom right corner shows that we would finish this school year, what I'm projecting, with a fund balances in the in the Food Service Fund of $740,000. Okay? And the way MDE works this is that you can only have a fund balance that equates to three months of your expenditures. If not, then we get put on the spend down plan by the state. I would get an audit finding, you know, all that. So we've got to stay below that threshold. I calculate that threshold to be this year 600,385. So to map on that, you need to spend $140,000 before June 30th in order to get just below that threshold. Okay, I'm very confident in these numbers. We've got enough of the data from the year to see where we're going to end up. So what you're going to see here in this proposal is a way to spend that money. Not while we've spoken to her. Keep in mind that I know the first question that I've answered before is, well, can't we just pay our employees more? The issue there is, we can, but all of our food service staff are part of a negotiating contract. So it's not as easy as just saying, let's get everybody ready. That's something we'll certainly look at as we negotiate support staff contract this spring. But something that we can't do right now before June 30th. So what we need to do is address our needs, and we certainly do have needs. And there's three primary needs before we get there. So what I did want to mention, I think I have it coming up here. So yeah, here it is. This kind of gives a better idea. I forgot that I put this together. So our necessary spend on $139,782 just to get low that that threshold. And so there's three purchases. Talking to Holly, hey, what are director of food service that we need? There's a combination oven for the high school. One's about $40,000. Apparently have that on the state website. I've been right now. We should have numbers by the next board meeting. There's need for new cafeteria tables at Cedar View Beach and Secret Trails. So 46 total tables. What I understand, what I've seen, there would be a lot of advantages to that, that kind of ragtag. So that would run, again, these numbers are a little bit high, I believe, but no more than $80,000. So that'd be about 120. And then we talked about this last year. I kind of formed this idea about a new serving line at the high school to kind of go along with our bond work. We projected that that will cost somewhere in the range of $130,000 to $150,000. And that really serves another purpose now as we transition eighth grade to Red Hawk in the future, because there's still a lot of really good items in our food service line at the high school. They're not end-of-life. But that will allow us to transition some of those items, or maybe all of those items, down to other other buildings like Red Hawk to make those spaces more inviting and able to serve more food than they otherwise may. So if we make these three purchases, I mentioned the combination ovens already up the bid, the cafeteria tables out the bid. The serving line, I want to speak with Russell and some other members of the team. Before I do that, I have the RFP ready. We're ready to press play on it, but there's some other things to consider there. So if we made those three purchases, I would project our year in fund mail is to be 470,000. Okay, so that would safely put us 130,000 below that line. But I think it's a conservative estimate. Okay, and you don't want to, I don't want to finish right at 600,000 and then, oops, we're over and then we did all this for, we don't still have the right plans and everything for MDE. And it's worth noting as well, I thought I put it out here, our fund balance at the end of last year was in the 400 to $470,000 range. But we were okay because obviously our expenditures, our three-month expenditures have gone up. Okay, so it's still a very, even if we finish at $470,000, it would still be the largest or nearly the largest fund balance we've ever had in food service. Okay, so we're certainly not scratching the bottom of the barrel. And what I had on here, there would still be plenty of money to consider employee compensation as we approach the support staff. That's all I have for the food services. More to come on that. So that's just, you know, there's no budget amendment to, we don't have to adopt anything in service. We only have to do that for general fund. So that's really for informational purposes. And then purchases, we'll have numbers at subsequent board meeting for you to consider and see where they cover. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Just trying to get what we need and stay below that threshold.
I was just curious, were there other items that you considered that Holly had was thinking about, but then decided not to move forward with that?
Honestly, these were the ones, you know, we made some purchases last year, and these were the ones we had spoken about last year as well. She she wanted cafeteria tables last year as well, but there was a little bit of concern on my behalf about if it was allowable or not. As long as you I got to clarify an answer on that. Basically, if we launched only use them for food service and not roll them out and use it for classrooms and things like that, it is allowable for service fund. Serving line, we weren't sure on. It's obviously a big purchase. I kind of wanted to see how this year was going to shake out, to shake it out that we can make that purchase. And then the combination oven, we purchased two of those last June for Red Hawk, I believe, and it's it's been worked out so well. She wanted another one at the high school. And I think the oven that's at the high school currently, she's planning to move, sorry, to another building. Big teams, there are always the guys behind.
I have no idea what you said.
Have you looked at potentially variety of food, quality of food, any of those aspects to kind of run our our selections?
Those are great questions. I do lie to you. I have not. Maybe the students here can talk to, talk to us about how they feel about food. Maybe you'll want to hear those answers. I'm not sure.
I was implying that it was bad.
Yeah, no, I'm not. Great question. I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm not sure. I do know that, you know, as with anything else this year with supply chain issues, you know, in the past, it's been easy to get food supplies, you know. Holly said to go on Amazon this year to order silverware and, you know, serving meat type things. In the past, you just gave her food service. So that's where our expenditures have gone up. I thought we were going to be higher than this, but the costs have risen as well. So I'm not sure. I know that some of the menu choices have been, you know, narrowed by just things not being available. So hopefully that gets better too.
Do you anticipate us keeping lunches and that for students?
That's the other thing. I don't see MDE putting this back anytime soon. In fact, there's, I think the announcement will be coming soon that all of next year, they'll be free as well. So this is one of those things where it's it's going to be, it's going to be difficult to put the toothpaste back in the tooth and make all those meals better. So I don't anticipate it could happen, but we're going on year two, almost year three of this now.
I'm all for it. I was advocating for that pre-pandemic. So I'm happy about that.
Yeah, and honestly, you know, I mean, there's still à la carte options that can be paid for, and we see that happening too. So it's a good thing for kids all around. But it certainly is raising revenues. But we're not the only ones in this boat. I know a lot of districts are trying to get heads.
And not to get too far into the weeds, but how how did we get from the original budget to the amended budget without being aware that those big increases were on their way?
I I guess I'm a, for me, I've been an optimist. And as I prepared that original budget this past May, you know, my thinking was, as I think a lot of ours were at the time, we're going to go back to normal. We're going to go back to normal this year. If you look at that original budget with the amendment budget or amended budget, you know, revenues are way up and expenses are way up. So they've kind of traveled together. But that's where I've I've learned from, you know, at first I thought in March 2020 that hey, by spring break, we'll be back. And then by the end of the school year, we're back to normal. And then, you know, so.
So good conservative budgeting.
Yeah.
Is what.
Yeah, and that's what I was really looking to do. Because I knew we could make these these changes on the fly. And if if there was going to be a change, it was going to be in a way of excess rather than being.
Yeah, if you're going to have a bit of variance, it's always better to have it on a positive side or a negative side.
Yeah, and I, you know, I kind of held this off through November, through December, you know, and wanted to make sure I was really certain, you know, we're not going to come to board with these purchases, or even howling with these purchases and say, hey, we need to buy some things. I'm certain this is where we're headed. So.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And we can come to discussion item D, Sex Education Advisory Board Recommendation, and Jen Haberlin presenting.
Hello. So you have the minutes of the meeting that we had just a couple of weeks ago, early February, we decided to move it from a June meeting to a mid-year meeting so that it really drives what happens going forward into next school year. And often in February, we begin planning for staffing, course offerings, and things like that, training for staff to be prepared. So with the help of Natasha from Willing to Wait, we slid that meeting back to mid-year, got the committee together. And as you might know, we're required to have that every two years to look at our program offerings and make a recommendation to the board, which is what you have here before you. If you look at our item three, final recommendations. So we've had a longstanding relationship with Willing to Wait since 2007, and they have provided our reproductive health at fifth grade, at the middle level, and at the high school. And the committee unanimously said we should continue that relationship. Our data shows that it's very positive for our students and our teachers. And so we were excited to be able to continue that. After we made that determination, Natasha shared with us some of the programming changes that have happened in their programming. So she laid out for us very nicely. It's been exciting to work with her this year because we're working on more of a contract situation where we say, let's lay out carefully what are our choices as a community, so that we're basing it on what our community would like from the recommendations of this reproductive health committee. And so she shared with us that elementary and middle school had very few changes to the programming. Small changes like the statistics were updated. So nothing that would really change the content. High school had some additional changes, and we spent some time talking about each of those and what our options were regarding them. She showed many of the lessons and talked that through with the committee to say, this is exactly what we're talking about. This is what we would not be talking about. And the committee was able to have some conversations about that. And so the recommendations are of the committee are that we take those updates that are made to the lessons specifically about internal and external female anatomy, specifically about LGBTQ statistics, and specifically about a lesson that had previously been excluded, but that allows our teachers to talk about, allows Willing to Wait's teachers to talk about the information related to how to prevent STDs and STIs. So the committee felt very comfortable with all of those recommendations, and that's what you have before you today. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
I don't have any questions, but I did appreciate the minute format. That was very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just wanted to ditto that as well. This is, this is really helpful to see the process. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so this is just for discussion this time, but in two weeks, we will take action on it. And then it will help us to know what to do going forward into next school year.
Thank you. All right, moving on to discussion item B, Red Hawk Bond Renovations Project Bid Recap with Chris LaHaye.
All right, so on the 24th of January, we spoke a little bit about the Red Hawk Bond work. This is the last big project for the Series One Bonds, which remember the timeline, we're set to wrap up in 2023 before we get really rolling on Series Two, which will go from 2023 to 2025. So bids are in, and they are here on the screen, and you can see them in board book as well. These are all the different trades, the vendors that were the consensus low bidder, the bidder we were comfortable to work with, the budget for each trade on Red Hawk, and where the bid came in. And then, of course, on the far right, how far we were over or under budget. And there were some big fluctuations, which is to be expected, because quite frankly, right now is just a really interesting time for materials and really anything in the trade. If anybody's doing any work on any projects in their home or businesses, you know what I'm talking about. So we were significantly bailed out by by two local businesses that have been absolute phenomenal stewards, and I'd be remiss to not mention them by name. And that's Hillard Electric and Dean's X. They have been phenomenal to work with through this whole process. They're on all of our projects. If you see here, Deans came in almost a half million dollars under budget on their aspect here, they're part of Red Hawk. And then Hillard Electric came in $874,000 under budget. If you didn't have those come in, we would be significantly over on this project. So really, really, really great. There was, the air got heavy in the room as we were opening bids, February 1st, but just really, really great local companies that have a lot of pride in this community. So it's great to see. So.
And Scott Jurnberg from Triangle Construction said that he has never seen anything like this before, where a local business owner comes in and demonstrates such a commitment to the community and demonstrates such a commitment to the school district, that they're literally leaving hundreds of thousands of dollars on the table, which they could bid to be competitive, but they're leaving those dollars on the table for the district. And he just said he's never, never seen that before in over 30 years of construction. So it is a great testimony to the commitment
Yeah.
of those local business owners to the district.
It's worth noting that it's not just on these big multi-million dollar contracts. Well, I think, you know, Vic knows just as much as anybody that Hillard Electric, you know, they're they're right here when we need them for small things too. They're just fantastic to work with. So. I wanted to get that out there. So all things considered, if you take a look at the bottom of this, we had budgeted. Now, this is just for the trades. This is just for the bids. It doesn't include any of the contingency, and I'll talk about that in a second, that is part of all these projects as well. We came in just $50,000, $53,000 above budget, which if you hear some of the horror stories in other districts of bond construction, that's pretty much. So we're very, very happy about that. And that's one other thing I should mention. It wasn't, it was a, it was a larger delta, as as you say, it was a large difference before, and Triangle worked to whittle this down and really kind of shave off some things that that we could kind of leave on the cutting room floor to get closer to our budget. So these are the bids that will be. So these are the bids that we'll be looking to, uh, to approve tonight. So, um, this is the bid day contractor cost here on the top. That's the nine million five hundred, uh, thirty-six thousand two forty-five. We have a lot of other things that go into this, so we're working on asbestos removal. I won't read through all of these, but these are the same as the other projects that we have, we've looked at as we've gone through Cedar View, the high school, Cedar Trails and the middle school, a little bit smaller part. Add it all up, we've got a recommended award tonight of eleven million two hundred and eight thousand two forty-five. Uh, but I, I did want to also add that we already did, um, were already approved, the pre-purchase of the H back at the same time as we approved, uh, Cedar View. So that number's up there as well. If you put it all together, our budget for the Red Hawk project was eleven million two thirty-eight, like, seven ninety-two. And if you add our bids, the contingency costs, the other costs, and what we already approved, it's a total of eleven million six seventy-five, nine seven four. So we are over budget on this project, but in scope of our overall bonds and, and what's happening in the trades right now, uh, I think Scott would agree with me. We're very happy. My last slide, because I promised I would only do five slide presentations this evening. I promised myself. Uh, this is everything in series one. So we've, uh, we've done Trails, we've done View, we've done, uh, the middle school, the high school. We have our support costs built in and this kind of stacks up where we're at. So our overall revenue, remember back from, uh, when we sold the bonds last June, we came up with a really good bond sale. Uh, we anticipated having thirty-two million, just over thirty-two million, uh, for this series one with, with just shy of thirty-two million three hundred. Right now, if you stack up all of our bid costs and what we're asking the board to approve, we're at thirty-two million six hundred and three thousand nine seven four. Let's say, well, you're over by three hundred thousand. That all includes a lot of contingency. That concludes a lot, or it's, sorry, that includes a lot of contingency costs, a lot of those things that we build in just to make sure that we've got that offered. Uh, we already returned some of that. If you look at, uh, Cedar Trails, for example, Cedar Trails is, is complete. We're very close to complete. It's been built completely. We finished, uh, over two hundred thousand below in that actual column, what we approved. Okay, if you look at, uh, the middle school, we approved a million ninety-nine, we came in at a million there. So there were some changes there from the original budget, but we're coming in below because those contingencies aren't the so I, I can say with confidence that even though the board approval amount exceeds what we have in revenue, it's by a percentage, by one percent less, um, and and we're coming in below. It's got those contingency costs. So I'm comfortable saying to the board, you can take action to approve this eleven million dollar change. But all entertaining questions made out. And I know Scott was in on a lot of means as well, so if you have anything to add on this, please feel free. That's up for action. That's our only action.
So I'm confident that you're, that you're right about the contingency. So I'm not questioning that at all, but if for whatever reason those costs don't come in lower than what we'd expect, where were those, where would that additional funding come from?
The question. So we, uh, we'll sell the other thirty-six million in twenty twenty-three. And obviously there's a lot of projects there. Um, the main project of series two is each other. The plan is to completely remodel it, other than gymnasium, or sorry, rebuild it. Um, but then we have the other main parts of series two. There's some work on the high school. There's drive work and parking work, uh, and road work. And then there's, there's money, quite a bit of money in for roofs. So we're a long ways from being finished. Uh, remember, may remember when we had, we're gonna see some roof savings in the high school. We scored damage. That was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars there. Um, and we've just actually realized recently that there's, uh, we had a, we had a company come through years ago and kind of go give us a, an estimate of the useful life, life of our roofs. Um, we've come to find that a lot of the insulation that was thought to be bad is still in great condition. So it's pretty much consensus from Triangle and our team at G M B that we're gonna realize some significant costs in roofing. We don't know for sure yet. We're gonna have that all re-approved, uh, as we make sure that it's all needed to be done, um, to the extent that we wish. So I think there will be savings at the end.
And, and we're being very strategic. We recognize that we can't kick the can down the road and shortchange the project at Beach. We can't shortchange the project at the high school, but there are things that we can do strategically now in the planning process. So for example, in the paving, uh, work at Red Hawk, um, rather than expand the parking lots, the new parking lots to their maximum capacity as they're currently drawn, by scaling those, uh, projects back slightly and maintaining the existing parking that we have to the north and west of Red Hawk, we can save some dollars. You know, it'll, we would be ready, uh, in the event that we could add those back in, but we can pull them out to provide us with some, some more grace, uh, in terms of those numbers. You know, we do have some dollars remaining in building site sinking fund. Um, if needed, uh, again, we don't want to go to that as our ready five. Uh, we can also go to the general fund if we need to, but we really want to be as strategic as we can be to make sure that we're leaving those dollars for those future projects. We would rather scale back somewhat, uh, the projects that we're currently working on with room to, to expand, given the opportunity, um, than to, you know, tap into those budgets down the road. It is very, um, you know, that the teams that we're working with at Triangle and at G M B are very mindful that uh, we have a fixed set of dollars and the scope of the work that we need to accomplish is pretty, pretty vast. And so they're really trying to be, um, creative, you know, so for example, the savings at Red Hawk alone, um, by, uh, doing some finishes in the bathrooms, uh, with paint versus peeling tile off and putting new tile up was, you know, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, uh, to go with an epoxy paint finish uh, in some of the, in some of the finish work. And so it's just little things like that, that, that we'll, we'll find the dollars. Uh, or we'll scale back the projects.
Let's go back to the the next students.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously. Yeah. And they.
Any more questions? Thank you. We'll be on for action. And we're moving forward with discussion item F, the city of Cedar Springs Utility Easement.
So, uh, in Board Book, there were three documents that I included. Uh, one was a map that the city of Cedar Springs provided, um, us with in regard to, uh, proposal that they have to bring another, uh, water main, uh, into the high school. Um, the other two documents were, uh, drafts of easement agreements that we would enter into uh, with the city in order for them to bring that water main across school property. Um, the benefit of the new water main is that it will be a bigger diameter water main, which will then be able to provide the district with more water, uh, across the board, um, as we continue to expand, um, and, and grow. But, you know, in order to do that, they've got to bring that line across, across the property and therefore we would need to enter a new agreement, uh, with them for easement. So, um, their attorneys have looked over the document. Our attorneys have looked over the document. It's really, uh, rather generic in terms of its uh, layout and structure, but it, it would be something that the board would have to approve as we would be granting them access to district property. Uh, so Russell Ray is working with the city, uh, project manager on this work. Um, and we also are working with Mike Brecking from Triangle Construction, just to make sure and to, you know, dance around the, uh, you know, all of the, the various projects that are gonna be going on, on the high school campus uh, over the next, you know, ten months. So their ideal timeline is April to October. Uh, but we know that there are gonna be some, some pretty hot, hot windows for us as far as student traffic on and off campus, construction traffic on and off campus. That's why we've got Mike Brecking from Triangle Construction involved and that's why Russell is working with the project. So, um, confident that we can make it happen. Uh, we would do it during the summer when we weren't impacting student traffic, uh, as much. So, construction projects are interesting.
Chris Hay.
Yeah, very much.
Thank you for the counter.
Yeah.
No questions?
That'll be fine, because it's gonna cut across some, some drives.
Well, we're even looking at the possibility of, you know, can they cut the drives in over spring break? Put the necessary, you know, infrastructure below the drive, backfill it and then over the summer, do the rest of their trenching, you know? That way they won't have to cut that main drive in June. It really gives them a little bit more flexibility there with their timing. Or something. It's a dance. Yeah.
All right. We'll move on with discussion item G, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three School of Choice Resolution with Chris Hay.
All right, uh, last one. This is just a, it's that time of year again, uh, resolution. It hasn't changed in the previous years. So this is a three-part resolution to opt out of section one oh five, which is we will not accept students from inside Kent County, um, districts to come here. And the reason we will not accept section one oh five, which is part of the state law, is because we will opt in to the Kent I S D Collaborative School of Choice Agreement. So it really does the same thing, but it's just an agreement between the districts and the county. And then we are also opting in to section one oh five C, which is the resolution to accept students from contiguous counties, um, into our school districts. So we have a lot of students from Nueago County and surrounding counties that way. So it's an opt-out of one oh five, opt-in to one oh five C, and then opt-in to the Kent I S D Collaborative Schools of Choice Program. Out of fraction tonight, same as it was the last several years. This will be out for action, uh, twenty-eight. So if you have any questions, feel free, reach out. We did talk about just maybe ma- making this a consent agenda item for years if it's not changed.
Any questions? Thank you. Got that right down, Pat.
Yep, got that one. Hasn't changed in a while.
Thank you. All right. Then we're just to the portion of our meeting where we have public comments. And this would be the time, if anyone would like, would like to address the board for three minutes, we would be listening to your concerns or comments. We won't be following up at this time. Um, Ms. Super Ted Smith will be following up at a later date. So do we have anyone scheduled for public?
We do. We had several individuals submit requests online and then I have one request, uh, from an individual in person who also submitted online. Uh, Chris, can you move that podium up, uh, into the center of this space, please? Um, so the first, uh, individual that submitted, uh, public comment request is actually a group of people. Uh, so we have four of our amazing students. Um, so Addison Brown, Caitlin Brown, Annalise Elliott and Haley Van Campen.
Okay, are, are you all gonna go separate or together?
We have two time, or like two different spaces scheduled or whatever, but, um, we're all speaking at different times, like, but we have the same, the same points.
All right. So like, did you time it? I'm just, I don't want to interrupt you. I want to, I just want to know what's going on.
No, we have two slots for total of six minutes.
We sign up twice.
Yeah.
All right, okay. Then I'm gonna set it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emily Tully. This is Haley Van Campen. Addison Brown and Haley Van Campen. We're all sophomores at Cedar Springs High School. It has come to our attention that there is a list of books that are being reviewed to be potentially banned from our school and our classroom libraries.
A colleague among individuals within this community is that the collective students of their schools are reading the themes of many books and immediately kind of influenced by them and attempting to add a certain way of inspiration from the book. This assumption of this lady is that our teachers have been teaching us specifically analyzed pieces of literature throughout their years of education. We have been taught to take it in, take in what we're reading, analyze the meaning and context of the text, and then form an opinion on it based on our individual beliefs. Additionally, it is important to note that we aren't reading these literary works for pleasure. Moreover, reading these books can enhance our academic knowledge and help expand the context and message of the story.
It is instilled in us that the purpose of high school is to prayer students not only for college, but also adulthood and jobs. Thus, our education should reflect that of the real world. In reality, the world is a tough place filled with uncensored and unforgiving things. So the more we are able to learn and attain at a young age, the more useful it will be to us later in life in terms of problem solving and understanding the complexities of life. Considering that literature is a work of art and art expresses life's ups and downs, it is also fitting that we learn how to weather and understand pieces of literature that reflect, um, not only life, but society as a whole. As famous author William Shakespeare wrote in his piece, A Mid, Midsommar Night's Dream, object of art is given, is to give life shape. This demonstrates that an author's goal is not to simply tell high schoolers what they should do, but to say something about life and what should, could occur within it. Literature is also a bridge for students to explore other cultures and learn about what occurred in, and is occurring worldwide. Taking these books away is not just taking away from our education, but also our connection to foreign cultures.
It is in fact a regular occurrence to encounter a plethora of different inappropriate situations and conversations from the hallway of our school. It is not uncommon to witness various racial slurs, obscene language and subjective hand gestures, begging the question as to why students feel the need to portray these traits. We have found that it certainly isn't due to literature. With one click of one, a student can open up social media apps and see all sorts of indecent content and unprofessional actions. According to the American Physiological Association, more than eighty percent of teens report that they use social media daily, whereas only twenty percent of teens report reading a book, magazine or newspaper every day. How does the theory that reading these cultureized, prized McDonald's taints students' views unlike apply when teens rarely read in the first place?
The contents of social media artists are not discussed or analyzed within the classroom. In contrast, the literature in which we read is heavily presented and teachers go to great lengths to ensure we understand what it is we're reading. When harsh themes pop up in our literature, teachers provide an in-depth explanation on what is happening, why it is happening and the message, message that author is trying to portray, making students feel comfortable and aware of the topic at hand. Classrooms are one of the safest environments for students to appropriately and maturely discuss difficult, discuss difficult, thought-provoking contact with the, with the guidance and expertise of a teacher. It should also be noted that as students, we were given a document at the beginning of the school year that our parents had assigned, ensuring that we could read any book within the classroom. Thus, this document gave parents a choice about which content their student is allowed to read. Additionally, if a student is uncomfortable with the content of a part in the novel, they can choose to skip it with no consequence to their grade. As students, we trust our teachers to make knowledgeable choices about what we read in the classroom environment.
For these reasons, we feel obligated to provide a screen perspective on the issue at hand and ask, as you see, as special students, take our move into consideration and reconsider the input they can be bringing books to our school. Thank you all, please, for being interested.
All right, the next individual who signed up to speak. And I've been a little dramatic. Um, uh, William and Deborah Childs.
Well, no. I've got you set for three minutes.
I've been doing this in three minutes.
Okay.
The child's mind, I'm a concerned parent. Just a lot of stuff here, an unfortunate events that have taken place in the last couple of years has kind of confused us. It confused a lot of.
It confused a lot of kids, and then when they, you know, I have children, and I'm very concerned about their life. I don't know who I can trust anymore. So I wrote this out, and I don't even know if I can mute. The reason that they do things is also the explanation of the medical profession in the United States, and that is Satanism and occult practices. And here we go, back to the ancient world, the Babylonians, when they built the pre, pre-dominos, the great temple of the Eschelotians, the largest healing center in the entire ancient world. It is named after him, Aios, the son of Apollo, who became known as the healer. But he did not heal by God, or through God, or by perfection or purification, which, which is the ancient dealing method, healing method of every people in the world. Not merely the Indians or anyone else, by the purification, but to do it by artificial. So it's no different today than when it was back then. By what they call pharmakia. Pharmakia is a part of Babylon. This is what the Bible predicts, that Babylon would use to deceive all nations. You don't have to be deceived. There is no way to be part of God's true people at the end of time and be connected with the system of administering poisonous drugs that manipulate and confuse the mind. In Greek mythology, pharmakia is witchcraft, magic, use of spells, and potions of magic, often involving drugs. It's called magic spell. The water is under the bridge, and the bridge is over the water. Watch the waters. The thoughts and opinions of others are not facts, and they do not define reality. When I was a child, we embraced those that we hated and the ones that we ran into. This world thinks bacteria is life unmarked, but heartbeat isn't. That doesn't make sense to me. We persecute women for leaving their children by calling them dead ones. Yet a woman can abort a child, and it's called pro-choice. That doesn't make sense to me. It's funny how we believe that the world owes us something, that phones get smarter and the people get dumber. It's like that young lady said about the birds. If you're unfamiliar with footnotes. Yeah? Because when you get a little tips, you destroy a child's brain. Information in computers can be altered by anybody. An election can be hacked. So can our education system. A pipeline can be hacked. So can our education system. So how does that give me the ability to be able to trust in what a computer has to offer? This is my child we're talking about. This isn't a kitchen table. Only one more script there, but.
So your three minutes is off?
Yep.
So if you want to give us copies of that?
Yeah, I can share that with the board if you'd like me to make a copy of it for you.
I just wondered if my voice heard. This is the first time I've ever done this, and I think that my participation matters. I'm really nervous. I don't like crowded people. And with everything that's gone on in the last couple of years, like I said, it makes me not know who I can trust. This is my child. We all have children. We all have families. We're all in this together. But that's not a Democrat team. That's not a Republican team. We're all one human race, and that's what matters the most. So the ideology that they're passing on to our children, oh, they should learn the facts, and the facts alone. Because if they don't know the facts, how are they going to become a police officer? Are we gonna trust them to be a judge in our case as we're being tried, or our children are being tried? We're not. We will have no faith in our system. And it starts with our children.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
The only other person that we have that signed up is Kelly How.
I tell you, I work here, and I'm terrified, right? So, Ron, welcome. Hi. I'm not usually on the side of things. There's something wrong with your phone's up. Okay, good evening. My name is Kelly How. I live at three oh seven Valley View in Rockford, Michigan. Takes bravery saying that in front of my students, but there you go. Um, so I currently work as an English teacher here at the high school. I entered teaching school. I signed up to become an English teacher. I knew my days would be spent doing a large amount of work outside of the classroom. If only I knew what that road would be. Since that time, I have taught for nearly eleven years. I have also earned a Masters of English and a Masters of Education and Literacy. I've also been teaching full-time and raising two small daughters while accomplishing these tasks. I earn these degrees for two reasons. One, in education, it's one of the only ways to increase your income. And two, so that I could have the expertise to offer the best possible education to my students. I began teaching American literature in the fall of twenty twenty. After reviewing the curriculum, it startled me that the only two voices that were mandatory in the curriculum outside of the norm of Columbus to Fitzgerald were Anne Bradstreet, a Puritan minister's wife, reading about her dear and loving husband in her piece of poetry, and Emily Dickinson, a recluse who the world would not accept because she was a woman author. That's it. Only other two voices that are in that curriculum. So the essential question of our textbook and of this course is what does it mean to be an American? It is clear, even without doing statistical analysis, that we are missing a few voices and what it means to be an American. The books that have been included in our list that are under questions in my classroom right now facilitate the major gaps in learning for our students in this curriculum. Not only do they address what it means to be American more inclusively, but the texts are also more contemporary and deal with conflicts, relationships, and situations that many of our students are constantly facing, regardless of how we try to protect them from it. These books took hundreds of hours to select. I sourced the AP tests from the last twenty years, pulled all the authors and titles off of them that I could find to facilitate this, searched Pulitzer Prize winners, National Book Award winners, et cetera, seeking to find the most engaging and relevant literature possible for my students. Creating an assignment, organizing the book club's partners, and making sure everyone had a book they want to read as much as any of them want to read any book I tell them they have to is, is a very big challenge and takes a lot of time, and I care, so I do it. After these books were challenged, a committee was formed. The books were read by administrators, parents of the students currently enrolled in my class, and other teachers. Throughout the meeting, difficulties and age-appropriate-ish news that were in the text were discussed. The committee came to the determination that the books should be left where they are in the curriculum. I'm really struggling to understand how this collective voice is not being trusted or honored. I am also wondering as to whether or not, as a school board, any of you have read these books or taken the time to read the criticism on them or talked about them, all of which I promise I have done. So I have a wealth of knowledge, resources, and researches, research that could be exceptionally beneficial to this conversation. It's very unclear to me why no one has asked me why these books are in my classroom in the first place. And so, because of the limited time I have to share with you, I will leave you with this. Students need windows. They need mirrors, and they need to be able to see themselves and others in what they read. If we take these books away, what mirror window are we taking away from student? What if that student desperately needed that text to cope, to grieve, to make a hard choice, to see how they deserve to be treated by people who love them? Some of our students only experience that through reading these books. Um, they only see the pieces of themselves and others through these books. We are here to teach all students. The book list has eighteen books on it. My intention is to have it continue to grow as I have the time to research more books. Students are only asked to select four of these books over the school year. There is also a caveat saying, I will help them find something else more appropriate for them if none of the provided texts are deemed appropriate. The choice is already there, not to read the books. If we care about every student and every stakeholder, and many of the stakeholders have stated their want, or at least acceptance of their students and of the students' wants to continue reading these books, how are we really honoring every student and their opportunity for an equitable and accessible education? Thank you for your time.
Oh, yes, as far as public comments.
Any other public comment? Yes, minute, Paul, please. Then we'll close public comments, seeing no other person's interested in addressing the board. And thank you to everybody that's home tonight. So we will move on to our only action item for tonight. And it's red bagel. So it is the Red Hawk Fund Renovation Project bid and awards, not to exceed eleven million, two thousand eight, two hundred and forty-five. And I would entertain a motion for as presented. Support. Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shoffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slaker?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Revard?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
The Bond Renovation Project is approved unanimously. Thank you. And that brings us to the communication portion of our board meeting. And for the board, I do have, as was noted in public comment, we are discussing a curriculum policy. And that is in the works, and it would be coming to you for revision. And the pieces of it are not necessarily looking to ban books, but to look at what curriculum pieces would offer, and then disclaimer for parents of what other books might be in the classroom. So the goal of looking towards a policy is that it serves all, all the pieces of, of the puzzle. So it serves the whole community and concerns whichever way either person was looking at the policy. And we did have, as we had the attorney Dan Martin with us, talking to us, we're not looking, we're not looking to censor, but we're looking to look at, just like we do per se with the sex ed curriculum, we're looking at the curriculum piece of it. So, that we need. So that's, but that would be coming to you for a first look, and it would be on for, you know, our normal two reads. But we've been methodical and thoughtful, looking at the legal pieces and hearing the different voices. And thank you, you know, for the people that shared tonight also. We've heard from different, different sets of people. So, so that, that's the thinking behind it. We're not looking to just do something with a slam dunk, and it's one and done. But we're looking to serve everyone and all of the students. That's why it's not a hurried process.
And really a process that'll serve us well in the future, so we don't have this necessarily.
Right, yeah, right. And it puts, you know, it puts up, I don't, I don't want to say it puts up the, of the expectations for. But as we, you know, there's lots of reading things, you know, whether we went to the public library or our work is not to, just not to take books off the shelf. That's not, that is not the goal of looking at policy. But that everyone is aware of what's there. So we have, so that will be coming. So that's my communication to you that'll be coming forth. And then we do have M A S B. We have some dates coming up. My encouragement would be if something interests you in the classes, you know, do that. But if you're just looking to check them off, you know, if, and if you want to be that person, you can. You know, interest is, is always more fun than. That's my communication. We have a season. What would you?
Perfect. We have with us five principals tonight to provide you with just a quick update, some celebrations that are happening in each of the buildings. And so we'll kick things off with Mr. Rob Barrow, the high school principal.
So I guess up here.
Sure. As well. Thank you.
Well, good evening, and thank you for some time to be able to celebrate some activities of our students at the high school. First and foremost, it's been talked about a little bit tonight, the musical and Into the Woods. Hit about nine hundred spectators come to that performance, and just a wonderful opportunity for our students. It was the last show for our director Rebecca Cospont, so we'll be looking for a new director this next year. But she's completed at least six shows. I might be a little bit off on that, maybe a few more than that. But we certainly appreciate all the work that she's done. Tomorrow night, we have a pre-festival concert for our marching band or our concert bands. And the band itself, many of its members are headed to Florida come Thursday. And so they're looking forward to that trip and being able to perform down at the Orlando site and everything. We had on last Saturday, two of our choirs go to solo and ensemble festival where they actually received one ratings, very strong one ratings. And so we're very happy for their performance as well. We also want to celebrate the FFA group and the other district leadership contest, February fourth. And so that means this Wednesday, they'll be actually having the regional competitions. And we had two groups that are two individuals that moved forward with that one in the creed contest, which is for beginning members, and then also in the job interview contest. Speaking of that group, they also had their first harvest of lettuce. I don't know if you've been informed about the fact that they have these flex farm and grow units that they're working with Halle Haywood and the food service department, growing lettuce about every thirty days. They'll be harvesting, and I think they have three total units, two of which I think are up and running right now at this point. And they did their first harvest last week, and I believe that was served in some of the salads on Thursday. Next week is their National FFA Week and celebrating the activities of their organization as well. The, today, we had sixteen students sit for the seal of bi-literacy examination. That's something that we've been doing at least three years now, and our number's a little bit down from where they were the very first time we offered it because we had several students who wanted to be able to do that. And so we've just been getting caught up, and those individuals were actually scheduled for it last Friday, but due to the snow day, took it today. And from what Mrs. Holmes let me know, she thought they did very, very well in listening and on their speaking pieces. We also start tomorrow with the scheduling for our students at the high school and the incoming freshmen. At least it kicks off that part. We have all the background work done with going through the curriculum guide and the updates there, along with making sure all the backend work is done on Power School. And so tomorrow, the ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders will be called to the auditorium one each hour. The ninth and eleventh graders actually be participating in the Kent ISD perception survey as well as giving information in preparation for their selection of classes, which will take place after midwinter breaks. It's kind of a pre-meeting to get their transcripts, kind of talk about and remind them certain things to plan on. And therefore, years worth of time to make sure they're staying on track and updating their naviance information. And then the incoming freshman eighth grade parent meeting, it'll be next Wednesday, or excuse me, next Thursday, February the twenty-fourth. It's seven PM. We've sent out invites to all of our current students and also put an add. It'll run two weeks in the Cedar Springs Post to invite those families that may not currently be Cedar Springs students. So that we'd love to have the Cedar Springs High School students. And then they'll start making their course selections. I believe it's around March fourth. So a lot of exciting things happening at the high school, and again, a pleasure to be able to share that with you this evening.
Thank you.
Brian Balling from the middle school.
Everybody, thank you very much for having me tonight. It's good to see you. Uh, and three things I was gonna update you on. One, uh, if you haven't heard, the East Coast trip is on. Exciting, very exciting. Was talking to, uh, the director tonight, Honor Ramirez, and just a lot of challenge around figuring out what we're gonna be able to do, kind of the moving target, guessing, where will the year be vaccine mandates? Where will, can we go through the border in Canada? But, um, she's working really hard to make sure that a great experience is there for the kids. And for those of you who don't know, it's been three years since we've been able to do this, and this is a tradition at the school. So, very excited that we're working it out and and figuring out a way to do that. Uh, parent-teacher conferences for us are March first and third coming up. Uh, in the fall, we kind of stumbled on something with doing the Zoom interviews, just like, or Zoom conferences like we did last year. In the fall, we had the best turnout that we've had in my four years here, that anyone can remember. Finding that parents, you know, really appreciate the ability to not have to make that drive in to have those five-minute meetings with each person. We have them scheduled out so that a parent could just schedule six five-minute meetings in a row and meet with their teachers, and it was, it was great. Uh, the teachers said it was awesome, and so we're, we're very excited about seeing, and spring conferences is usually like kind of a ghost town. And so, we're really hoping that those those numbers still stay high for the spring conferences. Uh, and the last thing is, we are also looking at our class, new class signups and, uh, just kind of an update on the way that our encore class, change and renovation for this year has gone. It's just really the kids have shown that there's a lot of excitement around it. If you're not aware of it, we've, we've kind of revamped the way we do our classes, so we have, uh, like a robotics class and intro coding class. We've added creative writing and mythology and, um, conceptual art class. And probably the most popular in the eighth grade is athletic performance class, which is excited. But, uh, there's just a lot of, it's really exciting to see the kids really pick something that they want, that they're passionate about, go learn about and chase after for for a semester. And, uh, and now we're seeing kids, you know, ask, "What can I take in this next semester? I want to change something. What can I take next year?" So, it's exciting to see for those kids. Uh, one of the classes that we've added this year that we have all seventh graders taking is team leadership. It's, um, if you've had one of your kids, uh, take that class, you know, it's a, it's just an outstanding class. Talks about a lot of core values, um, incorporates some public, public speaking. Uh, it is where our Will and Twenty program sits. I think the awesome teacher is somewhere, right? Is she still here? Oh, she, Libby Mativa is the teacher, so if you bet your kids have ever had Libby, you know that it's a home run. As far as the teacher teaching the class is just an outstanding experience. So, that, uh, we, we're only gonna look at growing that that program, the the different encore options. And, uh, we have a survey going out to students here at the end of March to see, you know, what kinds of things would you like? What can we, what experiences can we give you while you're here that would be really meaningful to you? So, that's my update for the middle school. Come see us anytime or the place of happy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Dylan Kitala.
Hard foul, follow Brian Balding. Um, hello to you all. Uh, gonna do a mix of some data and opportunities that we have going for us at Red Hawk in our sixth-grade building. Uh, kicking it off and might as well celebrate the musical again. Um, and as Brian said, our kids haven't had a lot of opportunities over the past three years for a field trip. So, at a last second, "Hey, we have the, we used to do this. Can we still do this? Yes, let's put this together and get our kids out there." Um, I think parents handled it well. Students and teachers were really flexible, got kids out there. Um, it it aligned completely with the curriculum and what they were looking at and characterization, as well as being able to uh, take what they're reading and see how that looks in in motion and through theater. And it was really great to be able to get them outside of the book and compare some of that, um, out of the classroom and having teachers be able to connect with kids and see the opportunities that we have at Cedar Springs. That was a big thing that we tried to sell. Knowing the arts have been down in choir and and band. We wanted them to really see as they're gonna be starting doing some selecting of coursework. See, look at what you can grow into. These students were in your seats and provide them that opportunity. So, that was really, um, fun and positive experience for the kids, which haven't had that field trip since about third grade. Um, other opportunities, I know I spoke to you a little bit about the intervention we've got going on. Um, academic services teams are really helping our interventionists just, not just make like, "Hey, let's go ahead and do a little more skill and drill." It's, "Hey, how can we make this a little more fun? How can we bring some activities that have a positive experience for our learners who struggle in math and reading and really growing those?" As we saw great gains in data, how can we fine-tune those and make those better? Um, student leadership committee, another opportunity for our learners. Uh, Courtney McDonald is a teacher, has done an amazing job of really building that program. Uh, they're reading to the preschoolers in the building, having an opportunity to do that because, you know, the big kids, they tower over those little ones and like they look up to them. So, it's a great opportunity for the sixth graders to be a role model within, uh, Red Hawk in that building. Um, they're also doing some of the end-of-the-year planning and how could they present to our building management team, a team of teachers and myself, about what our end-of-the-year looks like, uh, to take some of our funding and have a fun, positive experience at the end of the year for our sixth graders that they have to present it to us. Uh, and also with, um, our Title One finding, uh, Supporting Curriculum Night that we're gonna have on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth for an hour, where again, we try to have some fun, where we're gonna do a literature night and, um, a math night, where we have, uh, teachers rotating, uh, families through to see, "How can we make learning fun at home?" And just some game ideas that are just targeted with some of our, um, categories based on, "I ready for what target areas a student has?" And how can we just get a little more learning at home? Just a fun way to connect with your kids at home that is universal to any of our learners. Uh, so the SLC pumping that up and that curriculum night coming up, some great opportunities. Um, a little bit of the data, we had our mid-year review looking at, um, our referral data, and that's how many, um, write-ups come through the office daily. And the past two years, we saw that go from, "Oh, you know, the honeymoon period up to about three a day," and it's dropped down to about one and a half a day, which is really fun to look at, that we've been consistent, where it's like, "Yep, honeymoon." Ooh, we find out what's going on with this group, and then we've really put good things in place and got it back down to where students see what the positive behaviors are in our classroom. Um, we built a positive culture, uh, throughout the building and then even have some, uh, fun celebrations for those that are really showing those positive trends as well, and it's worked for two years now. Um, and then our counselor, uh, spoke with you a little bit about how fifty percent of our students identified her as a positive person that they would go to if they, um, needed support. Uh, she's connected with forty-two percent of our student body. So, in in a meaningful way, that forty-two percent of our students have had her as a support, that they've used her, uh, in some capacity this year. Um, helped brought, bring Ellie's place in for our students that have lost a loved one and partnered with the middle school for some of those students to be provided that opportunity. And then knowing depression and anxiety is something we've seen in our students, uh, gonna be starting up working with our mental health team, uh, to support a group, um, with some curriculum from U of M that we're looking at and seeing how can we support those students with the depression and anxiety component. So, just some more great things going on at Red Hawk, so I appreciate your time.
Carol or Tricia, who would like to go next?
I've got a little, uh, Courtney picked out, or Courtney will branch here, some things from three or four. I'm thinking you might want to set that timer, because I could go on all night, okay? But I'll try to. Because there's a lot of good things going on at the view, I gotta tell you.
We'll fly.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just give me the signal. Um, we have Valentine's for seniors today. Our students wrote two hundred and forty Valentines. We had to talk about how do you write it to somebody that you don't know, but it just warmed my heart, and they delivered. They're gonna be delivering though. So, they wrote two hundred and forty to deliver to the three homes that are locally here for us, for our seniors, so I thought that was really awesome. Um, we had a Valentine's Day staff breakfast this morning together to just kind of spend some time to get ready for the day because there's a lot of candy and love going on today, so we had some successful Valentine's parties. Um, the Nate test that I know that he talked about last time when I was gone, we were, uh, explained as an exemplary school is what they said. Our students were incredibly polite, and this man travels all over in the state to do these. And he had, I get a, a report from the, the official report, but he sent me an, uh, off the record report just to thank me so much and say how amazing our staff and our students were, so he exemplified. "We are fully staffed for recess and lunch. Amen." Okay, that's a big deal. So, we have the same people at recess lunch every day now. We're training them in our T B I S systems, so we are excited for that. So, thank you, Mark Dovias, for all that work. It was not an easy job. Um, we have the Rough Readers of Western Michigan. These aren't fighters, but these are dogs that come in rough rough. Um, and they come into all three of our schools every month and read for our kids. Our teachers pick kids that need it for the month, and they'll come in and read to them. So, that's really exciting work. Um, we had, for C K L A, we had a eureka invention presentations by our fourth grade, and they had to come up with a problem, and then they had to come up with a solution and a sales pitch. And I'm telling you, we have some politicians and salesmen coming at you for sure, and we had some very special guests. Um, Jen came over and helped in handing him, and I myself, and we had to act like producers, so they actually dressed up in hats and it was a big production, and they presented their pitch and their posters, and it was, they were so incredibly proud. But all of the fourth grade, um, students did that with the teachers. It was a huge hit. Um, also going on with C K L A, our M I S I program, our highly cognitively impaired students are partnered with one of our fifth-grade classrooms, and they're both doing C K L A. Now, my side classroom's doing like the first-grade edition, fifth grade's doing fifth-grade edition, but some of the topics overlap. So, when the M I S I students go into the fifth-grade classrooms, they know some of the things that the fifth-grade students don't know about the same topics. And it has been so powerful for those students to go in there and have conversations with their peers about the same topics. And sometimes they know things that they don't, so they're even seen as experts at some things. So, it is amazing and wonderful to see. Um, we have the mid-year teacher and support staff meetings. I met with all of my staff, um, support staff and teachers, and they're doing some great things and setting goals for the rest of the year. We have one hundred and seventy-five students participating in Battle of the Books, which is they have to agree to read at least five books. And once they read those five books, they're entered in a, a competition to see if they can answer the questions the quickest. You may have to race down and get it, so there's a little bit of athletic and a little bit of reading going on together with that. When I asked staff, "What do you want me to share tonight?", they said that we are supporting each other through all of this because we are filling a lot of holes on a daily basis with students and with staff and with recess. So, they are taking care of each other and making sure that our students have all of their needs met. We're planning Battle of, uh, March is Reading Month next month. It's usually basketball, and we're hoping to be able to actually do the staff-student basketball game again because that is a huge win. Um, next coming up in C K L A, we're really excited. We have the Renaissance at fifth grade, so that's a big point of interest and geology at fourth grade, but rocks could be cool, so it's gonna be good. We are planning a virtual math night, and tomorrow I'm going to spend the day with our M T S S team reviewing all of our data for the year. So, are you ready for trails? And I shared this from Courtney, and she said we had a donation of Native American artifacts donated to trails. The artifacts fit well with the kindergarten C K L A unit. The kindergarten teachers have some key pieces displayed in one of the corner glass cases. They also are setting up a walkthrough museum in the media center, so the kindergarten classes can do a walkthrough. And our Golden Hawk Squawk celebration is this Thursday, and they're gonna have a fancy lunch for those classes who are in the most Golden Hawk squawks during their lunch period. I asked her where the donation came from, and she said it was bequeathed in a will, and she, and their school was chosen for that. So, I guess it's a pretty big deal that they got that, so they're really excited about that, too. Thank you so much for your time, and please come visit us at the view. We would love to have you. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Tricia. Tricia Shennfield, who is our principal?
She has way too much energy this time. All right, and I get to be at the end. So, we had a great month also at B H. Um, some of the things that we've been doing is, um, really just trying to keep up staff morale during these cold months. In February, we're having fabulous Fridays in February, just doing some fun things with the staff, which includes some competitions, which have allowed us to donate coats and personal hygiene items to student services. We have given those to Tina, and also many canned goods to hand-to-hand, which we are giving out on a weekly basis as well. And also, as our staff is growing their understanding of using their Acadians data, we have really, um, been able to be focused and intentional with our reading interventions even more and more than ever before. So, we're super excited about that. Our third graders started cogget testing this year, so that will place students for AP and gifted and talented classes as they go into fourth grade. We also had, uh, you, a, finished our ancient Roman C K L A unit at third grade, and we had a huge celebration where students came to school dressed up as an ancient Roman. So, you can look at our Facebook page for all those pictures. They're fabulous. Um, this month, we also had our hundredth day of school celebrations, which is always fun. The kids come to school dressed up like they're a hundred years old, and they love, love that every year. It's a, it's a great day. And, um, we also had our results from our staff and family surveys come in this month, and they were very positive and encouraging as we continue to, um, make these great things that we're doing even, um, even better. And then we also had guest readers of Scott and Jen, both in our building this month, which is, which has been really fun.
Thank you. Thank you all for sharing your Valentine's.
That's all I have.
Okay. So, planning, we're talking about Winter Institute, whatever our next, um, our sort of board meeting this month, beginning in February. And I have anything else for planning, so it is eight ten, and we will stay adjourned.